Recording in progress.
On to order the regular meeting of the Riedel City Council, roll call please. Mayor Darnes here. Mayor Frank Timm Carter here. Councilmember Orr.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Who?
Councilmember Woodall. Excuse. Please rise for the allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and number which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration of the council duress unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Public, welcome. Anyone like to?
Oh.
Public comment? Any hand raised? Any emails?
Yep.
We will move on to consent calendar. So are there any members of the council who would like to remove an item in the consent calendar?
No.
Any public? Hand raised emails?
No.
Okay. And I ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So do.
Their motion, is there a second?
Second.
They have a motion in the second. Motion carries four zero. We will move on to staff reports and staff communications, page thirty two in our packets. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Darnes and members of the council. So the vehicle short, staff report this session, but our nuisance advisory committee, which is scheduled to normally meet this coming Wednesday at three P. M. The meeting has been canceled for this month and will be resuming next month. So just want to make sure the council is aware of that. And unless there's any questions from the council for staff, we're happy to try to answer them and return back to the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor Frank Timm?
No cast, we'll transport it to Miranda's. See, I was gonna say it. And other than that, no questions. Thank you.
And Orr, councilmember Wilson?
I think I'm good.
And are there any hand raised? Public, no emails? Then we will close, I have no questions, so we will close staff reports and communications and move on to special call items. Community affairs. Informational report on the development of a new solid waste franchise agreement and related topics included, but not limited to, universal collection and S. B. thirteen eighty-three. Page thirty-seven in our packets. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Darnes and members of the council. So this conversation has been ongoing for a number of years related to both universal collection or franchise agreement. So as the council will recall, our solid waste franchise agreement expires December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. And so we have been working on that particular issue of updating the franchise agreement. And then also beginning in September of two thousand nineteen, kind of the city has been exploring the concept of universal collection for all properties in the city to have mandatory garbage recycling and organics processing or collection, excuse me, in the city of Riedel. So this was the first in two thousand nineteen brought up at the nuisance advisory committee, where Recology came to the committee and gave a presentation to the nuisance advisory committee. That committee recommended adoption to the city council and also encouraged the city of Fortuna to also adopt universal collection. And then there was a series of meetings in two thousand twenty-one, including some workshops, as well as an every door direct mailer that went out to the community soliciting comments related to universal collection. And those comments are attached to your packet for your review. And so at that point in time, you know, we were thinking that we were going to be implementing it in a very short order to both update the solid waste franchise agreement and to potentially adopt universal collection. However, the evolution of this over time, and there should be an edge or desk, just a short little handout of the town on the backside, by the time that we got to June of two thousand twenty-four, you know, the information evolved to such a degree that universal collection was never going to be really an option available to Riedel less than until Fortuna in particular adopted, went to universal collection. So that process kind of stalled out while we were in a waiting pattern to make that consideration. Obviously, there's economies of scale when you're talking about a larger group. You know, there's new equipment that has to be purchased, new bins, new trucks and that sort of thing. But to, you know, again, those conversations are reflected in the minutes that are attached to your packet. Just one point of caution I would give to the council of reviewing those minutes is any of the numbers that you see from those discussions in two thousand twenty-one, I would kind of disregard. And part of our goal tonight is set the process in motion to get good numbers for the council to consider down the road here in the next couple of months. So in, so there've been a couple of very, very important developments in between two thousand twenty-one and today. One is that we have retained CSG consultants using CalRecycle grant money to help us with the negotiation process with Recology Gil River and also compliance issues related to S. B. thirteen eighty-three and all of the new regulations that are, they're here, they're already here in Humboldt County and across California. We're in an advantageous position in that our solid waste franchise agreement ends at the end of two thousand twenty-six, so the timing is actually pretty good for us to start making an adjustment. And the other, you know, important piece of information is that, you know, we're partnering, CSG is also working on behalf of the county of Humboldt, city of Eureka, city of Arcata and city of Fortuna. And our goal is to try to standardize the solid waste franchise agreements across the board between the cities with only minor variations to adjust for the unique circumstances of each city. And so we've been able to cost share in terms of pulling that off, but it's, this is a major sea change in terms of how the jurisdictions are cooperating. We're holding regular solid waste local task force meetings, we're holding regular staff meetings related to the thirteen eighty-three implementation, and we weren't doing that in two thousand twenty-one and before. So there's just this incredible synergy between the cities and the county of all of us working together to, you know, to benefit everybody. So it also benefits Recology in that there's kind of standard expected contract language, whereas before, when each jurisdiction was going at it independently, it's kind of a big confusing mess to try to pull that together if you're Recology Gil River or Recology. So, so again, we've been working with Kathleen Gallagher of CSG Consultants, she's also been working with all of our partners on this. And there's been a laser focus in terms of making sure that the costs that are represented by Recology are accurate. So none of the jurisdictions up here, including Riedel, have undergone this level of support and access to kind of modern solid waste franchise advisement and the modern agreement, which will be coming forward eventually to the council as we move forward with the new franchise agreement. So I'm very excited about that, and Riedel's been right there with the other partners, and our understanding is that the other smaller cities, Fortuna, Blue Lake and Trinidad, although I'm not sure exactly who their solid waste franchise user is, are on board with trying to streamline these agreements and kind of bring them together. So that's very good news. And so ultimately, what we're trying to do and accomplish with the tonight's meeting is to get direction from the council on what you would like to see so that we can go back to Recology at the negotiation table and discuss and the implementation of a new contract and what that would look like, both cost-wise and what they're capable of doing and so on and so forth. And then from there, that's where the rubber starts to hit the road in terms of, you know, signing agreements. We'll also have to update our whole city ordinances to adjust for, you know, requirements in the new contract and to make sure that we're on top of all of thirteen eighty-three ordinances and regulations that were required. And so, so there are going to be just a couple of things that the council will want to just be aware of that are, you know, strictly optional for the council's consideration and direction to your staff, which is that, you know, universal collection is not a mandate for the city of Riedel. It very well likely will be at some point in the future. And part of the past discussions was about this, where what is the most economical time to get on board and to have an agreement that is very similar to Fortuna's is when Fortuna goes to universal collection. Now, Riedel does not currently have any time schedule order or corrective action plan through CalRecycle. Fortuna does, Eureka does, the county does, Arcata does, but we don't. So those, all those jurisdictions are being forced to adopt universal collection. And just the consideration here is that over time, those requirements, when we're trying to get to seventy-five percent diversion and statewide, and when we're trying to get ultimately to zero waste, so zero landfill contribution statewide, which is the ultimate goal, and there is a local group up here who strongly advocates it, eventually those requirements will come to Riedel. The second piece of that is also the S. B. thirteen eighty-three. And similarly with the organics collection, technically speaking, right now we have a five-year waiver, which I believe expires in twenty-seven, and they will be opening up a potential round for an extension of that five-year waiver. But again, the problem is, is are they going to change that requirement? So right now, we have a waiver as a rural population area, but that waiver, again, eventually will most likely go away because the state wants to really meet those targets, the seventy-five percent diversion, the hundred percent diversion. And so those regulations will only ever ramp up. And what is the most economical time for us to do it? Where we can leverage the public information requirements with the city of Fortuna and share that load so that everybody kind of knows what's going on and we don't have drastic differences from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. But, you know, that would be one argument as to why you would do that today or, you know, in the coming year. So I, you know, those are, those are kind of some of the considerations and direction we want to get from the council. There will be multiple bites of the apple on this particular issue, but this is kind of the initial direction that the council wants to, that need from the council in order to produce factual numbers and bring them back to the council. So on the line, we do have Kathleen Gallagher from CSG Consultants. Again, I really appreciate their hard work with all of the jurisdictions in dialing and really kind of putting Recology into a position where they have to tighten up their game in all of Humboldt County because the jurisdictions are working together, never happened before. And, you know, and so some of the numbers, again, that I talked about in the minutes are not going to be, they're just not, none of them are going to be the numbers that you see coming forward over the next couple of months. So that's, that's a really big deal. So Kathleen's been here and I've kind of gone over some of the highlight decision points, and we'll get to about six questions for the council to weigh in on, and we'll kind of work through those. But I'll go ahead and turn it over to Kathleen to see if she is able to give a presentation.
Sure thing. Thank you so much, Kelly. I just wanted to make sure I audio checked that I can be heard.
Very good.
Excellent. Thank you. Really good to be with you all tonight. Thanks, thanks for spending some time, too, as my colleagues and I say, talk trash. I've been in the recycling and garbage world since nineteen eighty-nine, a very long time. And I've, with CSG, I only work with jurisdictions. I do not work with private entities. I don't work with recologies or waste managements or republics, just to avoid conflict of interest. That is, the company, CSG, we only provide service to jurisdictions. So we just wanted to share that with you. And as Kyle said, yeah, S. B. thirteen eighty-three, it's a behemoth of a new law. It is an unfunded mandate, so it has got a significant amount of requirements on jurisdictions. And like Kyle said, we have been underway on this very, very strong collaborative effort between Riedel, Fortuna, and Arcata, Eureka and the county. And just a quick update, you, it sounds like you've been very familiar with S. B. thirteen eighty-three, but some of the major mandates is, like Kyle had said, it's universal or mandatory collection for all businesses and for all residents. It's colored compliance with the collection containers. It's making sure that contamination monitoring is happening. And what they mean when we say contamination is, so when you're recycling, Ben, there's not a tennis shoe or there's not a black plastic bag, that is contamination. And so part of S. B. thirteen eighty-three is some mandatory checks to make that happen, and we'll go into more detail in that in a later time. So part of what, in terms of S. B. thirteen eighty-three, we have been underway with talking to Recology about some of their best practices, talking about successful profit margins to make sure that these numbers will come through cost effectively. So that has been a big part of what we've been doing. So like Kyle had said, one of our, one of our goals is to get a conversation and feedback with the city council tonight, is to get your feedback on some of the options. And then coming away from this meeting tonight, I would integrate those, your feedback and what your preferences are into the new franchise agreement and meet with Kyle and Recology and work out a lot of those, those details. And that is our intent, is to get your feedback, integrate those into the new franchise agreement. And in the coming months, we would come back to you after Recology has given us a cost-effective cost proposal rates. We'll talk about the proposition two eighteen, public hearing notice, et cetera. Those are, those are in the future, but first we want to really just get into what you prefer and what you want in Riedel. So the first one, Kyle, if agreeable with you, I was just going to jump right into the very first one on the staff report, which is on page the thirty-nine of the universal collection of garbage recycling and organics. Is, so the, so universal collection, Kyle just talked a bit, a bit more about it. One of the key things is that right now, when the services are voluntary, oftentimes they're not very cost effective in what, very simply, is when a recology truck's going down a street and they're only picking up, say, seven, seven recycling bins instead of thirty, there's not a lot of cost efficiency there. So one of the key things that we're looking to do is provide a consistent weekly service to residents and to businesses for our garbage, organics and recycling. And there are some exceptions. S. B. thirteen eighty-three does allow us to do waivers. So if it's an auto body shop or if it's a business that doesn't produce organics, we, there is a, what's called is a waiver process, and we would put that on the Riedel website, and it would allow that auto body shop to, to request a waiver, and that waiver would have to be approved by the city. And this is something that the very extensive S. B. thirteen eighty-three regulations allows. And I'm not going to get too into the weeds, but I'm happy to answer any questions about that along the line. So that's sort of the, the background and what the implementation is. So what, what we were looking at is, for your consideration, is to consider perhaps option A, which is full implementation. So, so because Riedel's current franchise agreement expires December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, we would have these new universal collection begin January first, two thousand twenty-seven. And just a quick side note, Arcata, Eureka, Fortuna County are all going to commence their services on July first, two thousand twenty-six. So those services, all of Recology will be commencing those services and transitioning on Jan., excuse me, on July first, two thousand twenty-six. I think this is good because if council decides that we want to do full implementation, a lot of the Riedel businesses and residents will see a lot of that outreach and education that have, that's been happening around to our neighboring jurisdictions. And we will have outreach and education to specific for Riedel. So that's one thing I just wanted to note. So that full implementation of option A would be weekly collection of garbage, recycling and organics. And of course, the positives to that would be to meet that S. B. thirteen eighty-three, as Kyle said. The state of California is very committed to getting organics out of the landfill because organics and landfills produces methane, which is a super carbon pollutant. It's eighty-four times more global warming potential than carbon dioxide. So getting that out of the landfill is a very strong environmental move on the positive side. And of course, we would be consistent with our neighboring cities. And then there's the cost efficiencies where we will, in the new franchise agreement that you will see is there is allocation across the jurisdiction. So we won't just have one new truck in Riedel. That will cross over to Fortuna, and there will be an allocation and a spreading out of those fixed costs. So that is a real benefit so that the So that is a real benefit so that the Rio Del businesses and residents won't be footing the whole bill for, for those new services. And of course, the cons, with this weekly collection, there is going to be increases because that is mandatory collection of new containers, trucks, truck drivers, et cetera. So that is in a nutshell, option A. Um, and then option B is, as Kyle said, we do have a waiver. Rio Del has a waiver until uh twenty twenty-seven. And um, we can, Cal Recycle, who's the enforcement agency, will allow uh us to reapply for a waiver mid-two thousand twenty-six. So um, they're not giving us a whole lot of detail about that right now. Um, but what we are hearing is that they're going to be more stringent about allowing waivers. Um, and they are, they are looking to have jurisdictions really step up because there is this very big effort um to, like I said, get organics out of the landfill. So the other option for council to consider is deferring our implementation of the organics uh collection until it is mandatory. So if we were, uh, did we, if we did receive a new uh waiver effective two thousand twenty-seven, we could defer uh collection until that uh waiver was uh exhausted. We don't know if that's going to be a two-year waiver or a five-year waiver. And just one thing to keep in mind is as other jurisdictions are rolling out these organics, excuse me, it may make sense to just do full implementation while all other jurisdictions are doing this. Um, recology has come and met us at the table in terms of trying to be as cost-efficient um as we, as we possibly can be. So that is um, the pros on that in terms of deferring it is, of course, we're going to see less cost because we will not be rolling out the organics. Um, but it, it could cause um some confusion by Rio Del residents and businesses if they're seeing their Fortuna neighbors getting these services, but they're not. So it's again, that consistency. Um, so that is option number, uh, that is universal collection. And I'm wondering if we want to just open up questions and and have discussion on that now? Or if we want to roll right into um the next item? I wanted to get um direction from Kyle or city council on what your preference is.
I will, um, hello, hi.
Hello there.
Thank you for being here and um explaining all this, this huge issue to us. Um, we appreciate you. I will um go ahead and throw out the um questions now. Um, I think that if we do step by step that way, no one has to try and hold on too long to a question and then forget it. So I'm going to go ahead and do that. Okay, uh, miracle ten.
Thank you, um. I'm going to save a lot of like the super nitpicky questions until we actually have numbers in front of us because every time I think, oh, that's a good, I think it's probably not the type. Um, so in the interest of brevity, uh, I do want to just comment that I think that just because we have the option to kick the can down the road doesn't really mean that that is a good option. Um, I have kind of been involved in this since the nuisance committee brought this up years ago. And um, I, this is coming, whether we defer now, whether we want it to come. It, this, this is happening. This is something that we're going to have to deal with. Um, I think that we should just do it now while everybody else does. From the very beginning of this issue, as city manager said, this has been a, well, wait for the opportunity, wait for the opportunity to see what everybody else is doing. I like the cohesive approach, especially if everybody else is doing it in July, six months before we are. Think that, uh, I'm liking that. Um, so not really questions, more just comments on the larger um scheme of things for me. So that is it for now. I will have questions later down the road, but I'd like to see numbers first still. Thanks.
Thank you, great.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, the house member, uh, number one, the house member Wilson.
Yes, I'm, I'm down the lines with uh Councilman Carter that we get this going now. You know, we've been talking about this. I don't need to look back before our current city manager got here that will bring the city manager, he wanted universal collection. So I seem like I've heard about this the whole time I've been on the council since two thousand twelve. And here we're, here we are, two thousand twenty-five. And we're still not doing, we're not having addressed that. So I like, I would really like to see, get something done, done instead of this can kicking thing. Then we get the universal collection. The other part that I, I still have a big concern of is the thirteen eighty-three issue. The, do you have, uh, what's your relationship and how are you working with HWMA? Because they're the ones that are ultimately going to handle, to my understanding, the thirteen eighty-three organics, you know?
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much.
Rocked up in the weather, but nobody seems to have an answer for this thirteen eighty-three.
Thank you so much for that question. Uh, I've been working very closely with the executive director, Eric. Um, he has been at most of our meetings. Uh, we have had many ongoing conversations about uh the delivery of the organics, keeping the organics clean. As you might remember, um, the organics will be delivered to HWMA. They do have a processor, a preprocessor um ready to receive these organics uh in July and in the case of Rio Del into January of two thousand twenty-seven. HWMA has been very closely uh working with us and um, yeah, I, I, Eric's been a great um great asset in terms of on the ground, uh, keep it real type of response back to us uh in terms of, of uh these, these programs. Um, and yeah, uh, most, most notably, uh, when he is, was talking about keeping materials clean, um, he has been a big part of our conversations. So and Hillary has been a big part of our, um, their finance staff has been part of our conversations and they will continue to be. We've been, have a very, like Kyle had said a little earlier, it's been a very good collaborative effort of kind of across the board between the jurisdictions and HWMA and myself.
The fourth container or are, is the thirteen eighty-three uh organics going to go in with our current green waste organics?
Yes, it is. So the, the green cart, the food waste will go uh in where the yard waste is, they will be mixed.
Does it just go in a, in a bag or does, I mean?
No, that, that was an early on and, and that was an early concept is that the, that, that the food waste would be bagged and placed inside the yard waste container. At this point, we are, it will all just be co-mingled. Um, so at, yet your curb side, you will have, if you have the existing yard waste container, you will just be dropping your food waste in that container. Um, and by the way, um, that container will be relabeled to state that it accepts food waste. Here's the food waste that it accepts, here's what's not acceptable. So um, that is, that is the current plan unless Eric has changed uh the direction on that in the last couple of weeks. Um, that is, that is the plan in terms of how this material will be collected and how it will be delivered to HWMA and then ultimately how it will be transferred from HWMA to the organics processor.
So it's, so when it goes in, they'll, they'll just process it all in one process.
I'm sorry.
Be transferred with the tulips.
The food, the, the food waste will be co-mingled with the, or with the yard trimmings, with the uh existing yard trimmings, leaves, tree limbs, et cetera.
All right, well, uh, I'll just refer back to like, as again, as Councilman Carter said, uh, I'd like to see more of the stuff with the cost. I know we, you gotta keep updating this cost situation. Uh, no, I am for moving, definitely moving ahead with getting the universal uh process going. The, this uh, you know, you're probably going to hear this probably more than once tonight, but the count, the, the city of Rio Del has got to wake up themselves. I mean, all we have there is basically staff and the contractor uh, and the council that come here and this is, uh, my, my understanding is correct, approximately half of the city is on universal, is on collection at this. And so um, I'm hoping that that, that, that's not going to cost, no, universal collection isn't going to increase the cost, but that's what we're, what you're going to do, I'll talk to the manager. Uh, that's what you're going to do with this contractor is get those prices nailed down. So then we say, okay, here's, here's what universal collection is going to cost versus what happens now.
Correct, so we're looking for direction from the council so that we can go to the uh, to our franchise hall or recology uh, and they can help produce some numbers so that we can then verify with CSG to make sure that they're accurate uh numbers.
That, that's what I thought, I heard. I mean, the other part that I know is going to happen and then I don't know how drastic that's going to be is what the cost, the added cost of thirteen eighty-three is processed into this, what that will do to our franchise agreement or to our, the day-to-day or weekly, monthly billing cycle is going to go up by the least substantially. And that's something that the city of Rio Del, the citizens need to get, get a grip on. And I don't know if they don't want to participate, I'm not sure until they get a bill. And then, then everybody wants to show up in this building and throw a fit.
Yeah.
And so um, I'm kind of losing, this is personally, I'm kind of losing patience with the city for not wanting to get involved because the city hasn't been talking about this for several years. So I don't believe we've been deficient. I think we've been more proactive than most of the small cities, actually, particularly with thirteen eighty-three. And, you know, our, um, what do you call it, our franchise agreements, we've been pretty good with that. So I think I've said enough for tonight, but definitely would like to see us move ahead.
Thank you, and if I, and if I may comment very quickly back and, and similar to what Kyle said, the intent is like, uh, hearing your feedback tonight is that uh I would integrate that into the new franchise agreement that has been drafted. Once, once we have all of those nailed down, the intent is for recology to provide us with the cost proposal. And we sit down, again, like Kyle had said, we sit down and look and make sure that there are no um, strange numbers, funny math. We want to make sure that the numbers are very accurate. Um, and then we would uh bring those forward uh as well. Uh, and those, those cost, that cost proposal would be included with the franchise agreement as exhibit A as well as what the resulting new rates would be for residents and for businesses. So if you had a thirty-two gallon container, um, those rates uh will all be calculated. Um, and of course, we're bringing that back to city council for your review and your consideration and your approval. So those, though, all, that comprehensive package will be forthcoming once we nail down what you want in the franchise agreement.
Um, and I just, uh, I'm a board, I just want to um be very clear for anyone who reads the minutes or looks back or is listening now, that what the cost, um, the city manager said that, you know, the cost will be different than it was disregard what you saw in two thousand twenty-one. But the difference is going to be higher, that, that's the difference. It's, it's, I mean, everything goes up. I mean, or is it?
Well, I, so.
I mean, the longer we wait, I, I don't mean to say it's going to be higher there, I just mean the longer you wait.
Oh, yeah.
Things go up, that's just the way it works. Um, the cost of everything goes up. So to do it now, it's, it's always better to just do it as soon as, if you're going to do it, do it as soon as you can because it will save over time, it will save all of our, all of us some, some money. Um, and also that, um, if we do it this way, it's very important that I think the citizens realize that this does allow us to share the burden. It goes across all of the jurisdictions and that's a huge thing, that Rio Del does not have to bear the burden. We wait and then at the end, everyone else is in and we're sitting out here. And then we decide, well, it's a mandate, we have to do it. And now we have to do, uh, bear the burden of education, of any new vehicles, all of that alone. So I know that's been stated, I just think that we just need to state it one more time very clearly so that the residents know that this isn't something that we take lightly. This isn't something that, you know, we're just being frivolous about in our decision-making, but this is something that is coming down the pipe and doing it as a group, especially in a situation where we don't ever do anything as a group, it seems like. But um, I think that that's a very, very important thing and a very strong reason to look at this in the um positive way. So that's all I have to, oh.
So just for clarification, I want to make sure that we're very clear about this. Uh, the council is uh, is, the consensus of the council is to move forward with option A at this point.
Correct, I would say so.
We're not, we're not adopting it tonight, we're just going to move ahead for optioning. I, I believe that's what I think we're saying, so I.
All right, well, I think we, uh, Kathleen, I think we can move to number, item number two, slide number two, Wilson.
Sounds great. Thank you so much for that um thoughtful feedback. So number two, residential bulky item collection. So a new program, so um, some of the, the neighboring jurisdictions have this. What this is, is it provides um an at-the-curb service for residents to uh dispose of their large bulky items, um, like a couch or an appliance or a mattress. Um, instead of waiting for a cleanup event, an annual cleanup event where you have to throw it in your truck or, or get that uh down to the cleanup event, this you bring right to your curb side and then you schedule it. You call recology and say, I want it picked up on my collection day on Tuesday and they will come and pick it up. And then just real quickly, um, I just wanted to give you some details, this is in the franchise agreement. So it is uh up to um two cubic yards. And um, so like I said, it can be one appliance, it could also include electronic equipment like a television or a computer. Um, and there are some, some contingencies about bulk of the, the length of material, I won't go into too much detail. Um, so the, that, that is the over, over um high level uh uh description of the bulky item. Um, I'll just have to say, I do have recology, I live in the Bay Area, I have recology, we have two bulky item pickups and I can't wait for my bulky item pickup because I could just bring it right to the curb and, and they collect it. Um, so option one is to have, offer one free annual bulky item pickup per household. And I just want to caution on the word free. So um, the annual bulky item pickup, there is a cost associated, but the resident is not paying directly for the cost. That cost is spread over all the rates. Um, so um, it is not when the resident calls to pick up for their bulky item pickup, it's not, they don't have a fifty-five dollar charge, but that cost is spread over all the rates. I just wanted to be clear, it is free to the resident, but that cost is associated within recology's cost proposal to us. Um, then option B is similar to what the other jurisdictions have, is they are, um, all of the jurisdictions at this point have agreed to two annual pickups, bulky item pickups per, um, per year. Um, they, um, that, that is, that's basically uh certainly going to have a slightly higher cost. Um, and then option C is to not include a bulky item pickup and continue that current annual community cleanup. Um, one thing I wanted to just note for your consideration is for residents that are elderly or injured, um, for, for folks that don't have a way to transport the materials, this offers a really much more convenient option. And it also, um, if somebody wants to get rid of their mattress and they don't want to wait for the cleanup, they're not going to do a legal comp, uh, a legal drop off, a legal dumping at the side of the road. And then I just, um, Kyle had shared some of the information from that annual cleanup, the Mother's Day cleanup. And I did take a quick look and it does look like um not a lot of participation when you look at across the city of Rio Del. Uh, when I looked at it, it's a hundred and thirty-four vehicles came in two thousand twenty-four. Um, we likely will see more material uh collected and disposed um with a bulky item pickup because of the convenience that's, like I said, I've been in garbage. um, with a bulky item pickup because of the convenience. That's, like I said, I've been in garbage recycling since, uh, for a very long time, since nineteen eighty-nine. That has been my experience. And what I would really recommend is when I've shared this with the other jurisdictions is we really want the residents to use the service. We want to have that outreach and education, say, use your bulky item pickup. It's not at no cost to you. It really does reduce illegal dumping. So that, that is, um, option B, option A is one annual cleanup. Option B is two, uh, clean, cleanups. And option C is no cleanup, um, of the bulky item, but continue that annual cleanup event. Um, so I'm going to stop there and get your, get your thoughts and feedback.
Thank you. Councilor Orr?
Uh, just really quickly, I'm, I'm, I'm for the two bulky item because Christmas and spring cleaning seem to be bulky times. But our option C says hybrid approach, one thing of event plus one bulky thing.
That's the next one.
My wrong one?
You're on number four. That threw me off too. That's the only.
Jumping ahead. There is that, there is that hybrid approach as well. Yes. And that's, that's like you said into number four.
Is that clear on how the curbside thing works? Do they, do they just have a route that they come around and pick this stuff up? Or do you have to call them and say, again, I got a big pieces. I got a mattress on my curb.
Yeah. You would call them.
Certain day, a certain time. How, how does that work?
Yeah. The, you would, the resident would call recology and recology would then say, we're going to pick it up and on your next collection day. I'm, I'm just throwing a day out there, next Thursday. Um, so it's, it's the resident calling recology and recology then, uh, scheduling that within their flatbed truck. And they come and pick up that, that material on that allotted day. Um, it is a scheduled, uh, it is a scheduled bulky item. People don't randomly just put it out. You have to call and, uh, recology will collect it.
But so you, they have, they have one, like Rialto will have one day on a weekly basis or bi-weekly or that they come by?
Recology, similar to, um, this, uh, these shared costs, they will have a flatbed truck that will be running through, uh, throughout all of the jurisdictions. And so when, say, uh, twenty-five Rialto residents schedule their pickups on a certain day, they will, they will allocate that to the truck. Uh, they will allocate those, those collections. There will not be one truck de- designated to Rialto. It would be one of those shared costs. So that fleet and the vehicles would be a shared cost throughout. Um, it's, you are not paying for all of those fixed costs of that flatbed truck, just to be clear.
So you, you'll have to schedule this with recology, huh?
That's right. And that will be part of the outreach and education. And also I would recommend we include it on the, on the Rialto City website. Just so folks that perhaps are moving to Rialto know that it's available.
Because recology isn't really good at responding to telephone calls.
That is, I was.
That's a, that's a, I've heard it from a lot of people. They, they just want to get a question or something and they, they, they never, you know, it'll say, hey, well, leave your phone number and we'll call you back. Well, good luck. They never call you back. And so, um, that's something I would hope as a contractor you would do for us that
Yeah.
we would get some kind of a guarantee that they're going to respond to us so people can deal with this. Otherwise.
Thank you so much. We have included that in as a performance standard and there are liquidated damages for non-compliance. Um, if they don't pick up, and I have had conversations with recology about that very thing because I have called recology and have been on hold just to see how customer service responds. And they, it was incredible how long it took, um, to get my, uh, my, my phone answered. So this is one of the things that we have included in the new franchise agreement as part of performance standards. This is an ongoing conversation, however, with recology because I do, I'm recommending that they, um, that they commit more staff to customer service.
And the other thing is this is, this is a charge that will go to each customer in the, in the jurisdiction. And, uh, not like, like the green waste is an add-on right now is an add-on to yours. You can get, you get recycling with your landfill disposal, solid waste. And then if you want green waste, you pay another, I don't know, something, you pay additional charge for building cycle to go with that. But is this, is this?
I'm sorry. What we're proposing is slightly different than that for the new service. And again, this is at your direction. Um, that similar to what residents have right now where they have their garbage service and then the recycling is offered at no charge. What we would be recommending is what's called a bundled service where the organics and the recycling are included for the resident as one charge. So if you have, say, a sixty-four gallon garbage container, you're going to receive also a, uh, a recycling container, an organics collection container. You will not see separate costs for organics. It will be one rate for all those three services on your bill from recology.
Included in one charge?
Yes. It's called a bundled rate and it's.
Either option we choose.
I'm sorry?
Including whichever option A, B, or C that we choose, or A and B, that we choose, that we choose one of those. We have to choose an A or a B, I understand, or a C.
And I'm sorry, I'm just going to back up for a second. I thought you were talking about collection of organics being separate. Um, this is actually my, what I was just talking about was separate then bulky item collection. It's in the new services that recall it, that, that recology would provide to Rialto is right now, Rialto residents have a, um, garbage, garbage container and a recycling container, and that is all at one charge. What we would be proposing is in the new services that would begin on January first of twenty twenty-seven, it would be one charge that your residents would see for all three services. And those three services, what I mean is solid waste, recycling and organics. This is, um, a, I just wanted to clear, I was trying to clarify your point a little bit earlier when you said organics was an additional cost. We are not proposing that we would do that. We would have what's called as a bundled service where Rialto residents would only see one service charge for all those three services for their organics collection, their recycling and their garbage. I just, I was trying to clarify just that point a little bit earlier. Separate from the bulky item collection item we're talking about right now.
Scan and clarification. My additional question is still, so that means once you go universal collection, you get all of those, those in one charge. Is the curbside included in that universal collection on charge here?
That, that rate would be applied inclusive of the cost that would include whether the one bulky item or the two bulky item. It would be all in that one charge that the resident would see if they had, say, a thirty-two gallon container or a sixty-four gallon container or a ninety-six gallon container. They would not see an additional charge on their, on their bill from ecology for a bulky item collection.
Thank you.
Thank you. And sorry, sorry about that long answer. I just wanted to make sure.
We need to get it cleared out.
Great.
Your thoughts, Ann. Thank you. Um, we do need some kind of bulky item collection. Um, I think that's a major perk. I think it will help, like we said, with dumping. Sometimes also people don't just dump it on the river bar. They just keep it in their yard forever. And I think it would also help with that too. Um, as far as one or two, two would be great. Let's see the numbers before I weigh in, um, you know, completely. And I want to second what council member Wilson said, which is if we have to call and schedule, they need to answer the phone because I had a real hard time getting through myself sometimes. Um, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I I would go with option, option B because it just sounds like it would be great. It would be very convenient. Um, and I think some of the mothers, the, the annual program, I think sometimes the numbers are low because it's the day before Mother's Day and a lot of people aren't here and can't, you know, dump it off on the neighbor to take it. So I think that this would be, um, very helpful to everyone. Um, the one thing, and I'm not sure, I'm trying to clarify what council member Wilson was trying to clarify there is that like, for example, option B says increased convenience, higher cost, meaning there is a cost. And so the question then is it just in the base rate, so to speak?
That's correct.
That's, yes.
It's spread across all rates. That's right.
Okay. That's, that's, I just wanted to be sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, I think we are.
Go ahead.
No.
But this, if we go to this curbside thing, does that then eliminate the, the universal dump off day? Do we have now dagger away?
Uh, so I think that's covered under item number four.
Is that on the fourth? Yeah. Okay. Now, I'm going to analyze something.
And before we move on to item, um, three, uh, are we, do we have consensus on, uh, for option B? And I know we, I know we're looking to get numbers, uh, one, once we get that cost proposal. Uh, but are we looking at option B at this point?
Yeah.
Thank you.
City manager, did you have something? Oh, that was all of that. Okay, all right. Okay, number three.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'll move along. I'll move along more quickly. Um, so low income discount. So, um, if, if residents have a PG&E care program, uh, if they qualify for that single family, and this would only be for, for single family um, customers, um, the city council does have the option to include a discount, um, for their garbage service. Um, and this would of course be providing rate relief for these income qualified residents. Um, some have talked about senior rate discount, but we have talked, uh, a whole lot. And, and really sometimes it's just low income, not necessarily senior. So seniors, of course, would be included. But if they qualify for the PG&E care program, um, they could, of course, qualify for the ten, uh, for the discount. And it is up to city council's discretion if you wanted a five percent or a discount or a ten percent. The other jurisdictions, um, have, have weighed in and they are at a ten percent discount. Um, and again, this, these program costs, um, would be spread across the, the total, total rate, uh, the total rate base. So, um, it is, it is at the city's discretion. So, um, wanted to get your, your feedback and thoughts on that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson. Do you have, you have any questions?
Um, I, I guess, is number four a separate issue than number three?
Yes.
So all the discussion we just had on number three.
That was number two.
Could go, it would, would be either four take its place or three be the one we'd use.
No, we were talking, the discussion we just had was on number two. The, the discussion we just had was number two. We're coming up to number four, but right now we're at number three, which is about the discount. Is right at the very, very bottom.
I see you, a low income discount.
And then the next page is, there you go.
So we're not doing, um.
We're not there yet.
Yeah, give a discount, but again, um, either that or they'll dump it on the, they'll dump it on the road.
All right. Um, council member Orr?
Uh, just a quick question. So the, the base rate that we're talking about for the three containers that still varies depending upon size of, um, the, the bin that the user needs, correct?
Exactly. If it's a ninety-six gallon container, it's going to be more expensive than a thirty-two gallon container. Yes. If, uh, of solid waste, of garbage, yep.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm all for a discount.
Okay. Um, I'm glad you're here.
I would like to, um, offer the discount. I think, um, this is one of those situations that's going to be tough no matter what we do. And I think that it's up to us to make it. If there's any way to make it potentially a little bit easier on people, and this is one of them, we should, yes, discount ten percent.
Um, I, I agree that we should offer discount. I, I hope that, um, as you are, um, doing your negotiation and doing your, um, the cost studies, um, that you could perhaps, um, show us what a ten percent, what a five percent, what a eight, because really I understand that then it will go across the total base, um, and which means that all of the residents will bear the burden of the discount. And so therefore, if, if there's a, if we could see, um, what this discount versus that discount would be because you might not be low income, but you might be on the line. And so you might need some consideration as well. So if that's a doable thing, that will be.
Thank you. Absolutely. Yeah. We can definitely do that.
I definitely believe in the discounts where low income.
Thank you. I think that sounds like it's unanimous. Um, can I agreeable to move on to the annual community cleanup?
Yes, please.
Great. Um, so the one we've been waiting for, so with the city hosting the annual cleanup, um, to drop off their bulky items. So option A is to continue with the annual cleanup as it currently is structured or replace it with one or two of the bulky items. So we would basically supplement, um, the bulky item cleanup with the, um, uh, with one or two of these, um, sorry, that is not accurate. Uh, option B is to replace one or two bulky items with a curbside. And then option C is to consider doing both, um, retain one cleanup event and then do the bulky item. I would, I would caution that option C would be probably the more costly of all options because there's quite a bit of logistics and staff time and containers involved with that cleanup event. Um, and if we do the hybrid, um, we probably, option C would likely be our higher cost item. So I would just caution on that one. Um, and then we just talked about the convenience of bulky items. So, um, wanted to get council's feedback on this one.
Um, I would go with option B, just replace it. Um, I think it might be a little confusing to have both things going on. Um, I would also want to know what the other jurisdictions are doing because once again, I think consistency is good. Um, but ultimately I do think that it's a kind of, um, it, it uses a lot of staff time on a set of day when the weather's nice. So, uh, I, I'd go with ditch it and replace it with a bulky item curbside pickups. That's me. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just answer, um, we are not intending, the other jurisdictions are not intending a community cleanup. So, uh, the other jurisdictions are going with, um, the two bulky item cleanup and, excuse me, the two bulky item collection and not a community cleanup.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Orr?
Um, I'm inclined to go with option B, but I did have a question about the bulky item. I didn't pick up, not going back to number two, but, um, has it been discussed or is there an option to have vouchers for bulky item instead of, or a curbside pickup for people that they don't necessarily have a single bulky item, but they have a trailer full of trash that they can use the voucher to go to the dump? Something that can't be thrown on a flatbed by waste management easily?
Yeah. I, I would have to look into that one. Thank you for that question. I would have to look into that one and get back to you on that one. So vouchers, so that if they had materials and they take it over to, um, HWMA where they could just dispose of it at no cost, I think is what you're saying. Is that correct?
Right. I mean, it, it ends up being the same two pickups slash drop offs per year, but one is the option to take it yourself if it's multiple loose items to clean out an attic or a garage or something, and it's not a single bulky item that can be loaded on.
Got it. I, I will, um, circle back on that one. Thank you.
That was it. Councilmember Wilson?
The, uh, so again, for my clarification, we're looking at, when we come to this item four, are we looking at either choosing item two or four? Is that what we are doing?
We, yeah.
We're going through redundant thing kind of here. We just went through it and do an hour dealing with four, which has the community cleanup, the, the, the.
Yeah, absolutely. We could have consolidated those. Yeah, absolutely. We could have consolidated those. So re- really, the, the question is, um, we completely eliminating the community cleanup and going to bulky items. So you, you're absolutely accurate. We, we could have consolidated these two items.
That's what item four is, is to decide to keep the commi- the.
Yes.
The, the one. And when we, as you're gonna use this information to figure out the costs, will that come back to the council so that we see the end results of our decision before we make a final decision? Or are we making the final decision tonight?
We're getting, we're requesting direction from council tonight. And once we receive, um, so for example, I'm hearing that, um, option B, where we are eliminating the community cleanup and going to two bulky item, if that's the consensus of the council. Um, then we would integrate that into Rio Del's new franchise agreement and then, um, get Recology to provide the cost proposal on that. And then we would return back to city council with the new franchise agreement, the new cost proposal, and what that, what those resulting rates would look like. So this will, this, this cost will be returning back to you for your review and consideration.
I, I, it's, it's a, to me, to me, it's, you know, I don't see it, it doesn't affect me directly, but I understand particularly council member Orr's comment, where we, they, they end up with the, like a clean out garage, or they do, they do something that generates an extra amount of trash. And then you have a bulky item, so you get, but how the hybrid, you get to retain the cleanup, community agreement, and one, and one cleanup event plus one bulky item. I, I would kind of lean towards the hybrid. But I, I literally want, I mean, uh,
Thank you. Well, I think she's gonna look at that whole voucher question.
I, I can see if this is as confusing as this, at least, I don't know, I'm not a sharp with something impacting, but, um, this, once we get through this, uh, somehow the city of Rio Del, they've, if, if they care, I don't know that they care or not, not, oh, yeah, flattered or whatever, they, they should be.
Should, absolutely. I thought they would be. Um, so, um, I would, um, go with option B. I will ask though, when it says one or two bulky items, just, this is just a curious, curiosity question. If I have a mattress and a chair, and I call for a bulky item, because there is no S in that, very particular about things like that. So, um, is it like a mattress? Or it could be two mattresses on the same pickup?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Um, the way, the way that we have structured it in the franchise agreement, it is one household item, like a refrigerator, or a range, or a washer, or a dryer, uh, water heater. So it's basically one, one large item is what they allow. Um, and then, uh, they have, um, restrictions in terms of, uh, the can, the containers cannot exceed two feet by four feet. Um, and I'm just looking at our franchise agreement. Um, my apologies, I wanted to just fill it out. There's one more, there's one more item. So it is up to, um, it is one large item, but then, and I, I, my apologies, I can't find the, the item where it says, then there's a certain number of bags. It's like 150 pounds of garbage bags that you can include, old cleanup materials, or, um, I'm gonna follow back up, because I don't have it right in front of me, my apologies. But it's, to answer your question, it's one large appliance and then, um, basically up to six bags of, um, garbage that you can.
Okay, thank you. And, and I would say that, um, you pretty much put almost, not like a stove, but you could put a vacuum cleaner next to your garbage can and they pick it up even now. Yeah, and that's not even a agreement thing.
Wow.
So, um, I think we are, um, overall, the same option B.
Okay, and, and you're gonna check on the vouchers?
Yes, yeah.
Check on the vouchers, thank you. And then I'm gonna follow up with the, uh, exact wording in the franchise agreement about, um, all the materials on the bulky item to your question. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If, if I can proceed to number five, um,
That would be great.
Thank you. So, um, the 20 gallon garbage container, um, offer the smaller garbage container option for residents who generate minimal waste. Um, so right now, you know, typically, some of the residents have a 64 gallon or a 32. Um, once the resident receives an organic's container, um, organics, um, HWMA and Eric, the executive director, has, has reviewed the materials that we can accept in terms, in terms of food waste. And it's a fairly long list of what those organics are. It's pizza boxes, it's food, it's meat, it's fish, paper towels. So it's a significant amount of materials that can go into your organics container. And then, as you know, there's many, um, many diverse items that can go into your recycling container. So really, the result is what's left is oftentimes not much. So a 20 gallon garbage container, um, is an area that we'd really like to encourage to increase the diversion, um, in Rio Del and re- reduce the amount of material going to landfill. Um, and then, of course, there's a lower cost for the resident on that 20 gallon container. So we really would like to encourage folks to have that 20 gallon container. I'd like to share that I have a family of four, um, and we do have a 20 gallon container. So we're, we're able to, uh, we're able to, um, have weekly collection with a 20 gallon for a family of four. So just as a comparison, we do have a 64 gallon container for recycling, excuse me, and a 96 gallon for our organics and food waste. So we tend to max out all of those pretty well. So just to give you a frame of reference. So those are, those are, um, really wanted to encourage. And, um, not necessarily an option, but we would like to include this for the residents, um, as an option when we get the cost proposal and then the resulting rate structure from Recology.
Thank you. Councilmember Orr?
Uh, yeah, a great idea, just simply because of it's, you leave them with a bigger trash can, they're gonna throw more stuff in that trash can instead of separating, to be honest, so.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And then moving on to six, um, which is our last item. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have consensus and no one had questions. I'm with you, but I gotta have to do it. Um, yes, offer the option.
The, we already have the 20 gallon option. Now, let's, we already do that.
Okay.
I mean, so we've, I guess it wouldn't change, but I'm doing, is it gonna take, you know, you're taking away the 32 gallon?
No. No, we would, we would continue the 32, but, um, use the, the 20 gallon. I, I do not have a 20 gallon in my rate structure from Recology, and that might be a, a, a Recology here. So, um, we simply wanted to include it. It is what all jurisdictions are doing. We wanted, in the, in the, uh, air of, um, uniformity, we wanted to have all residents have a 20 ga- the option of a 20 gallon, a 32, a 64, or a 96.
I mean, why don't you go look at your franchise agreement? Because I, I know when I, this last year, they went up, it goes up every year a little bit. I went through and looked at the thing, I was trying to follow the numbers on the 32 gallon. I thought that's what I had, but then I saw that it tells me on my bill that I'm a 20 gallon.
Okay.
There's 20 gallons, there's a 20 gallon and a 32 gallon, and I guess it's a 64, a bigger one. So that's, it looks to me like it's already included. Because the insurance form, there's a bear down with the rate increase for this. The, became affected as whatever was like July or whatever became effective.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we are in consensus for the 20 gallon garbage container.
That's okay.
Yes.
Really appreciate the feedback there. And on the last one, the franchise fee modification. Um, so the, uh, I'm sure you're very familiar, provides the franchise fee provides revenue to, you know, pay all the administrative and oversight costs for the solid waste management and support a lot of those general fund activities related to waste. Um, so right now, as you know, Rio Del's is at 5% um, the franchise fee. And just as a comparison, for Eureka at 10%, Arcata at 10%, Fortuna 8%, Humboldt County at 5%. Um, so some of the considerations are to basically, um, increase that to provide more, um, revenue for the city and a sustainable revenue. Um, SB 1383 has a lot of administrative requirements, and that could certainly help the city, um, report back to CalRecycle on those administrative requirements. So that's, um, some of that could help staff pay for some of the, um, some, the reporting that is required as part of, uh, what CalRecycle, uh, requires for SB 1383. So wanted to open that up for discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
What, do you want me to answer you? I'm just.
Do you agree or disagree with adjusting the franchise fee to be consistent with the other jurisdictions? I don't know if that number.
On line, it says the regional comparison estimate, you know, what do you want me to change? I mean, I, I guess I just, I thought you were just going over the comparison with the numbers she gave. Yeah, it didn't match on the paper, but I wanted to break it up during the conversation, but what do you want me to match?
So the question, if I could just reiterate, the question is, would city council, uh, be open to increasing the franchise fee? So to perhaps meet Fortune's 8% franchise fee to allow the city to have more sustainable revenue for, um, for the city moving forward?
So do we want, you're saying, what you're asking is, if we want to raise our fees in order to receive more revenue for the city?
That's right, raise the franchise fee, yes.
I'm gonna keep it, the price as low as we can keep it. If, if, if we're paying the bill, wash, uh, I would like to, I would like to see our city pay the least amount that they have to, because if I hear the question right, this garbage is gonna go up. And, and people haven't got that. I'm on ECUMA and I've been listening to this for a long time. You know, people find, if they look into this, the most undervalued charge that we get is garbage. And they show you these charges, which are passed, a lot of it's passed on through to us in the process. And if we, if we, it's gonna go up. So I don't see any reason to increase our rates um, just to see that directly go to the city. The, the citizens are gonna get hit with, they're getting hit with everything, water, sewer, uh, throughout the whole county, as well as everybody's getting these effects. And I would like to keep our rates as low as we possibly can. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm behind raising it, uh, the franchise fees, because you're saying basically with more reporting is going to come either another position or more man hours behind all of that, they're gonna have to be paid for somehow.
Yes. There's a lot of administrative costs that, um, a, a part-time staff person or somebody will need to do to report back to CalRecycle on compliance with SB 1383.
Which is gonna fall on the city to fund, whether we get money from the users or it comes out of some other fund that's.
Exactly.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor Poten?
Yes.
Um, and, um, it says, and I'm sorry if you told me and I missed it, is it Rio Del at 5% now currently? Okay, so we're at the same as the Kennedy. Um, the top one, because I, I understand what side is that one.
I would honestly say save it for the numbers.
Yeah, uh, that's like, that is a save it for the numbers kind of thing for me. I would like to see, um, because the, the percentage, the 5% is, it's a percentage, that 5% is the percentage of the bill?
Of gross revenue, of, of Recology's gross revenue.
Okay.
The vast majority of your bills actually associated with global waste management authority fees.
Yes. It would be a fairly nominal impact, but we could have Recology run of the 5% compared to say, an 8% compared to, the number is whatever you would.
Yeah, that would be right.
We, we could, we could do an analysis with Recology on that. Uh, for a franchise fee, it would be fairly low, uh, a fairly low impact to rates, because it's spread so wide across the, their, um, the jur- the, the entire jurisdiction. But, um, certainly understand the concerns on, on any rate impact for the, for the ratepayers.
She bowled, there you go.
Hi. Disappeared.
Well, um, thank you. Is there anything else you need from us? Um, we really appreciate you being here. We appreciate your going over and, you know, just clarifying issues so that we can speak to it intelligently when we're talking to constituents. And, um, I just, I want to say thank you for being here.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure talking to you all. Thank you.
Public comments are, don't go anywhere. Public comments, hand raised, emails. Where Jesse go? He's gonna have a question, but he left. So, um, I think that's, um, I think that has been it. And again, we appreciate you being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. You too. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. And now we will move on to item number two, receive staff report on past discussions and the process for establishing billboards, page 67 in our packets.
Thank you, Mayor Orr and members of the council. I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to our community development director, Mr. Gavon Ball.
Thank you very much. Mr. Council, this item is on your agenda tonight. Attorney West of Mr. Peany, who was here on the meeting on October 7th, uh, requesting to discuss billboard, in particular, a community billboard, most likely at the sewage water disposal site for folks heading Southbound, coming into town, letting them know the city of Rio Del is here, and we offer services for folks. Um, a little bit of discussion, we do, background as you say, we do have, uh, guidelines right now are signed regulations, and they're called freeway oriented billboards. And there's a section in our municipal that allows for them. Um, it would need to be amended to include that site, that wastewater disposal field site. Right now, billboards are limited to the Humboldt Rio Del Business Park. We've got two of them over there. And if you look on page, there's a map. Page 72 actually shows the two billboards, one at the South entrance, and then all the conference. And then on page 73, uh, it's number head view and shows the locations of those two billboards there. So what we would need to do is we need direction from the council to amend the regulations to allow billboards on the west side of Highway 101. And we would also have to rezone, um, a number of those slivers over there, industrial commercials. Under Caltrans regulations, billboards are only allowed in industrial or commercials only designated. The area right now is on public facilities. As the council may remember, back in 2022, at the direction of the council, we actually issued an RFP looking for proposals from outdoor advertising firms to place their billboards on city property. At that time, we were living primarily over, uh, the Humboldt Rio Del side of the business park. The city actually owns a small slipper plant, and that's actually highlighted on page 68, those are the actual report there. Um, what Mr. Peany is talking about is what's called a community oriented billboard, specifically small billboards, and I think to me, Americans, the one that Fortuna has at Tribune on 7th, which, uh, headed north into Fortuna, um, I think it's. I think it's a Lillidge Grange sign on colorblind. I think it's Lillidge Grange. Basically says, come to the city of Fortuna, we've got goods and services to offer. And I think that's what the chamber of commerce is looking for as well. So what we would do is we would take the planning commission in your direction. Pursue a rezone, possibly up to three slivers. Decide potentially three billboards over there. One of them would be a community billboard, well-known, might possibly be an LED billboard. An LED billboard actually changes. Similar to the casino, but not at that scale. There's one on the south end of Eureka. I think that one is ten by twenty. We could look at something at that scale there. But with the direction of the council, we will try to get this on next Tuesday's planning commission agenda. As your council so directs. I know that Mr. Peany may have some words and I know that Jesse Jeffries, who actually owns a property over there, has some words to say. Right now, our current regulations restrict billboards, so they're no closer than what Alton Isle Park. Because we have those two existing billboards over at the Humboldt Rio Del Business Park, it would eliminate any potential billboards over there. So we're looking at probably suggesting a, an amendment to limit the distance no more than a thousand feet or a thousand feet or so. And Mr. Jeffries' property actually would accommodate a billboard if that amendment were passed and approved, adopted by your council. Mr. Jeffries actually reached out to the city probably three or four years ago about the possibility of actually signing the billboard over there. And we just never moved forward on it with Mr. Peany's approach to the council last week. It's time to revisit that. And again, in your direction, we'll certainly do that. Do you have any questions? More than happy to answer them. If not, Mr. Peany may want to make some comments on Mr. Jeffries.
Thank you.
Yeah, personally, I'd just like to thank everyone for getting right on this topic and your time. The one thing I would note, this billboard that you drew up, I mean, is ideal for what I was thinking. One change I would make maybe is say next exit. On it. But yeah, I just, when I came here, it's, it was through the chamber, but now I feel it's more city, chamber. So is it fifty fifty? I'm trying to figure out where we're at, where I should stand on this. And then I don't know on a timeframe or reaching out far as funding. If I should wait a little bit and get more information. So that's coming around. Yeah.
Thank you. Probably you can get more information, but let's move on and maybe get it down somewhere.
I may, to the mayor, it takes roughly two months. You go through the planning commission and then to the city council. There's actually a briefing to the city council. The first one is an induction building. The second one's the adoption. And then the ordinance becomes effective thirty days after that. So you're probably looking at maybe sixty, seventy-five days before it actually becomes effective, if in fact the amendment is passed. Okay, yeah, just trying to gather information when I go back to the chamber and I keep things going along. So yeah, I appreciate for all this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Karen.
Good evening, welcome.
Good to see you guys this evening. As far as signs, I spoke to Kevin about three years ago. I'm personally more interested in a commercial sign and LED lit sign. On the property three fifty Northwestern Avenue, which is next to Glenn there, where the construction company is currently. And I paid a lot of money for that property in the height of the real estate boom. And probably worth about a third of what I paid for it today. And I would like to see some revenue get generated. And I've been looking into signs. There is that one when you come into Eureka there on the south end. You know, the first gas station is when you first come into Eureka there on the right, it's owned by All Points too. And it's an LED lit sign that can be changed remotely. And so I was looking for something like that. With the current ordinance, when I looked into it three years ago, states that they have to be a half a mile apart of each other. And the signs that are currently there on the park were, I believe, they were part of, they were sawmills. So it was an in and out exit sign and it kind of somehow turned into an advertisement sign and it got permitted through Caltrans. And they're just kind of grandfathered when the city took it over. And so with the, with the bridge being moved in twenty twenty-seven, I originally wanted to propose putting a sign at the green building. But now this bridge heading northbound, I think it's coming down in twenty-seven and getting moved over closer to the southbound bridge. And so it kind of cuts off that entire end of the park as far as LED sign will go and visibility in the freeway would get realigned there. And so farther down the track there by Glenn, I think would be a great spot for an LED sign. I know. Yeah, I've been, I've been interested in this for quite a few years and I heard this discussion was coming. I just wanted to come in and kind of speak what was on my mind. Thank you.
Again, I may through the mayor, when Jesse and I talked this afternoon. One of the advantages of an LED sign, in case there is an emergency, he would offer that sign where the cities use to provide guidelines. Which would be a great public benefit.
Yeah, there's not many of them to follow up on. And I don't think there's many besides the one there coming to Eureka that I'm aware of. Along the whole one oh one that's LED lit, other than the Bay River Casino sign. And so, yeah, for me, I'd like to see some sort of revenue. I have that property I've been paying on for six years and I paid a lot of money for it and zero income so far. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. First, I'm an address Wally. I am thankful for you for coming and for doing the, in the order that you're doing it, right? I was at the chamber meeting when this came up and it was like a potential, could the chamber apply for funding to like get a grant to build a pool billboard, but what's the point of even pursuing those grants if it's not possible through the city? So that's kind of how this ended up here. I also love this, except to change the slogan, but yes, I think that'd be great. So I guess you have your answer. It's doable.
Yeah.
It's doable. So the long and short of it is, it's doable. And I'll hear what the other council members say, obviously, but this is not a straight up no for you. So that's good. That's great. Especially if the chamber is willing to take on some other responsibility about, you know, actually getting the thing up. I gotta move on to Jesse. Obviously, I would love to get you some revenue on that land. You know, you've been an asset to the city for a long time now and to me, if it's just as easy to rezone something and help you out, I would love to do that. Quick question, what would the billboard say?
Anybody that wanted to advertise on all of it through Eureka, anywhere in the town?
So it'd be like advertising and what you're talking about would be like, yay, Rio Del, get off the freeway. Ten floor. Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify. That's me.
I can't see.
If you can.
So yeah, I think I already said this already, but basically the way that it's, the ordinance is written right now, the signs have to be a half mile apart from each other. But with the current layout that they are, it really doesn't even allow for a third sign over there at all. So essentially, the ordinance is saying that three signs are allowed, but then the distance doesn't allow for three signs. So.
Thank you.
Hey, couldn't you get people off the highway into Rio Del and all for it?
Basically, the same thing. It's gonna bring people into the city. Did you say we have to, the city has to pay, pay, pay you to put, to rent the space or is it, is it that the guy who owns the sign that pays you?
Yeah, so I've been looking a little bit into signs. Most signs are owned by like big outside companies. Obviously, I keep this owned locally personally. And yeah, most people get into these contracts and they sign these thirty-year contracts. They got another company that comes and manages the sign, does all that type of stuff, but I would, I would keep it home personally and.
So you would, you would own the sign and then rent it to the city?
I, I wouldn't rent it to the city. I would allow the city to use, my, my sign would be going northbound. On the freeway. So I don't know that my sign is kind of going the opposite direction to welcome Rio Del and people into Rio Del. I guess it could be a, a double sign like that. Freeway, but.
But in an emergency.
Yeah, in an emergency, it would just, it would just be used from the city and be able to allow the city to put up, there was some sort of emergency, the earthquake stuff was going on and.
So it's not really a cost to the city. It's, we're just allowing you to do.
Yeah, I want to build a sign for commercial use for profit and.
We're just changing the ordinance.
Yeah, I need, I need a rule change of the setback.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so that's what hinders me now. So yeah, and I want to be able to be provided to the city if there was some important message that needed to be displayed, you know? Okay.
You know, and if I may, I'm through the mayor again. Back in twenty-one, we did issue that RFP. By the way, I don't think, I told you that we did not get one response from any of the outdoor advertising companies. You're talking all points, talking upfront, stop advertising. You basically got zero responses. But if we have to zone to maybe free sites at the wastewater disposal field. One of them could be for a city billboard, that the city wanted to get into the business of advertising. For example, on your desk tonight, I put a copy of this, for some reason did not show up in your packet. But on the last page, third page, there's a copy of an LED billboard there. And I just had AI generated and I asked him to put a Coyote Valley Casino and a Skunk Train advertisement on. So it could be a potential revenue source for the city. The city of Folsom, the city of Sacramento, actually owns their own billboards and they actually generate revenue for advertising. So if that's a direction the council wants to go down the road by zoning these slivers of land, and they're gonna be small slivers of land just to accommodate the sign themselves. These signs are basically ten by twenty feet. So you're probably looking at a twenty by forty foot sliver of land, either two or three slivers that can rezone to industrial commercial to potentially allow for the community oriented billboard, which the chamber wants to put up, which would be a great idea. And then one where the city might own it and operate it and actually make some revenue on it. It's just, it's just something that will come up down the road. But in order to make this happen, right now, we need to make some tax amendments to accommodate them.
So that's important again, zoning, yes.
Absolutely. A math and a tax amendment.
Yeah, well, I am, I'm for everything. I'm not for more than one sign on the west side. I mean, I can be outvoted. I'm okay with that. I'm good with the community sign, but I'm more about the view beautiful like it is, but if, you know, but I'm happy with the welcome to Rio Del. And I am easygoing, so, you know, if everybody else wants it, I'm not gonna stop my feet or anything. The friendly city is Fortuna's logo.
Yeah.
So we don't want to put that on there.
I should have said the friendly.
Friendlier. Way friendlier city. But anyway, I am for, yes.
My saving was small town, big heart.
It's good. I love that. It's good.
So I think we are consensus. Do I need a, do I need a motion? Approve the request? Is there a motion to approve the request?
Sorry.
We have a motion in a second. Motion carries for zero.
There it is.
And now we will move on to ordinances and special resolutions. Twenty twenty-five slash ten twenty-one dash dot zero eight. Approved resolution number sixteen fifty-one dash twenty twenty-five on present the execution of a financing agreement with the state water resources control board and comply with California Government Code Section five eight five two point one in an amount of three million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, eighty-three dollars and one cent. Including principal and interest, page eighty-five in our packet, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes and members of the council. So the city has been working for quite a long time on this water capital improvement project. Really starting in twenty fifteen and we are in the midst of the construction of the project. The city was awarded a twelve point nine million dollar grant through the state water resources control board to accomplish this project, which is a huge benefit, both in terms of you know, getting all the work done in one, one chunk. Versus spreading it out over multiple years, but also getting that large chunk of state funding in to Rio Del to, to save a great pair of dollars. The, the city has attempted over the, over the past couple of years to increase the amount of the grant award, however. And the state of California has said, the state water resource control board has said that there will be no additional brands available for this project. So when the project was put out to bid, right, when the rubber met the road, it was structured in such a way that items could be peeled off of the bid to meet the budget for the project. So in that process, some items were, were cut out to fit into the total twelve point nine million dollar budget, ten million dollar construction allocation plus the reserve. So we are at a point, a decision point and looking for the council's direction. To complete the fully envisioned project, we would essentially need to take out financing in order to complete the originally envisioned project. Again, the state's loan provide additional funding directly as a grant, however, they will finance this particular project. So the total debt service, as the mayor mentioned earlier, is three point four seven six million dollars. That includes interest as well. But the principal amount that would be taken out in this loan would be two point three four five and the interest rate would be one point nine percent. And spread out over a forty-year, well, forty-two year period with interest over, over a fairly lengthy period of time. So this is one point nine percent interest. You know, we would prefer to see it zero from, from the state and we have tried to make that case with the state of California. Related to, you know, the city's status as a disadvantaged community. However, one point nine percent is, is very optimal interest rate. And that was what basically the state made available for us. The council has the option in this case to not proceed with this and not take out the additional loan. And that is an option, but the, you know, the capital need still remains with the system and would eventually need to be funded. And there's no guarantee that the state would provide an additional grant for us to, to complete the project. The cost would be higher down the road on top of that. And, and so on and so forth. So this is an optimal time to do it. There is a debt issuance that the city previously has, has accrued that is retiring in twenty twenty-eight or twenty twenty-nine. So there's a little bit of an overlap between the two debt payments. Plenty within the capacity of this, of the current rate structure to cover. And so staff is recommending moving forward with this lending option. And again, if approved, the additional work will be conducted on below a north or Rigby, Painter, Walker, Berkeley, Davis and Center. So what we're talking about is additional hydrants, meters, meters, meter boxes, valves and additional piping services down the street as well as the service lines that connect, to connect the homes. So. And then I don't know if Randy has anything else to add to that, but.
I would suggest that we go through this and pass it. Bottom line.
Okay, I'm, and if we do this loan, will it happen at the same time? It'll just be continuation? We won't like have to break down and start it over again? It'll just be a part of this particular thing, the operation that's going on right now?
Yeah, so this is the time where we kind of need to make the decisions to include the additives or just permanently abandon them. And so, you know, now is the time, they're going to be mobilized uh, for into next year. Um, so the timeline is kind of stretched out a little bit. Um, they'll also be working on the tank during the winter. The, the council has received the previous agenda item, but yeah, this would basically integrate into the existing project.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, I don't like projects that are only finishing ninety percent, and so, um, I mean, yeah, it's painful to be like, oh, we're gonna pay this off in twenty sixty-seven, but it's a little, just do it. Game, let it go.
Um, Councilmember Orr. Councilmember Wilson.
Yep.
Are there any hands raised? Any emails? Is there a motion to? The veteran.
Oh, yes.
For the abolition of San Diego.
No, are they, resolution, resolution sixty, sorry, I closed my, uh, thing up there.
Yes, I made that motion. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Motion carries for zero. And we are at, um, council comments and communications. Mayor, folks in.
Thank you. Um, first and foremost, uh, we spoke last time about the Davis Street Park lot lines, um, being a straight line rather than curving around, and I said I'd get back to you guys. So, um, I went to the school board meeting. Their school board is completely fine to change those lot lines to go around. They just kind of went, when and now they're all straight line. I don't know. Um, so when I asked about it, they said, sure thing. Um, so just to make it absolutely official, they've directed their superintendent to add that to the November agenda so that they can formally vote to make those lot lines, just give us a little, what is it, like an extra acre or something?
About a half acre.
Whatever it is, a little bit of extra land. Um, so, so that's my report back on the lot lines. Um, Wildwood Witch's Bike Ride is this Saturday, October twenty-fifth at noon. We're starting at the C and C Market. Rain or shine, it's gonna be rain, but I'm gonna be there. Um, I just, it's not that I want to ride my bike in the rain, but I really am all about these reoccurring community events, that if somebody took the time out of their schedule and the energy to put this on, then I'm gonna be there. So, um, it'll be fun. Um, on Halloween Day, we've got the downtown trick-or-treat happening, kind of over by Emerald Z for little kids around one o'clock. Um, then there's the Halloween dog costume contest at three thirty, also at the barber shop that's on Halloween Day. Lastly, the trunk retreat at the fire hall on Halloween is from six to eight P M.
Is the school gonna do the morning thing?
The school's gonna do the morning thing. I believe that's at nine AM, but they usually leave from the school at nine AM, and then it takes them a second to be up here. So, um, that's always really fun to hand out candy at city hall, so, um, anybody who wants can come on over. The next Chamber of Commerce meeting is November third at six P M. That is a Monday at the Resource Center. And my very last and most important thing is that if Julie's watching to say, we miss you, Julie, and we hope you're doing well. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, no reports or anything, but what are the legalities associated with maybe all of those billboards giving next services five hundred miles? So.
You're stuck. You better stop.
I would have to look into that.
I, yeah.
But I think it's a great idea.
It's a great, awesome idea.
Councilmember Wilson.
Um, a quick question for Councilman Carter.
Yeah.
Does that include the outfield?
Yeah.
With the lot lines, just don't get it.
Yeah, it'll go around the whole ball field, including the outfield. It, it was just cutting the outfield off last time in a straight line from the fence, the tennis courts. They will, they're totally fine to change it to include the outfield. Yeah.
That was what I thought, but I.
Yes.
And, uh, okay, and the other thing is I have RCA third D to the, where the lease went. One of the things that happened, I don't know, where he's standing on some of this stuff that we were, that the RCA was doing with the tribes, the, uh, Trump administration did a, they pulled back the funds that had already been awarded. This was on local news as well. Had been awarded to, uh, it was four tribes, and then one, one of those pulled out because of this old confusion. So it was left with the three, I think, Yurok, uh, Lu Lake, and, and, um, I don't know, maybe better, that haven't, but these grids that they were going to put in won't go in in the current configuration. The tribes have to come up with another big million dollars or something that, that, the, the administration pulled back, so, um, which I think is sad. Of all the things that RCA has done in, in the, this was one that was really going to help Humboldt County because they're, these tribes are at the end of the grid. And so when there's a problem with the, with the grid and the storms, they lose power. If they would have put in the, the solar ring, the, the battery system, they would have like three days of the batteries that they would go at a time, and they would be able to uphold their, their reservations, housing and all their settlements. And so, uh, let's put it. So that's all.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I, I have nothing to, I have nothing to report out. Um, I will say, lost a good friend, Nancy Kurtz. Give her my tug of the ear, because she and I watched, uh, there were net together, the reruns, and we lost her. If Rio Del can be as resilient as ninety-seven-year-old Nancy Kurtz was, we will be just fine.
Yes.
So, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
It's like the lady you have in the, in the brain.
Yeah, and I brought the blind hat too. Yeah. So, um, I think we can ask for a motion to adjourn until November fourth, six P M. Motion second. I mean, yeah, what if you're.